Six thirty.
I don't know what that is.
Twenty six, if you want to go on.
Thanks, no thirty, twenty three.
Six thirty, like to call this meeting to order, if everyone could rise and applaud.
We might run some phones.
I apologize to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
First reminder is if you do have a cell phone, please make sure it's either off or on vibrate or on silent, we appreciate that. So does everyone having warrant, there should have been one in every care. There's a warrant is also in the town report if you'd like to leave there. Reviewing the return from Tuesday's election, we had two open seats for selectmen. The two candidates that won was Sean Vigro for reelection and Robin Nocquinto. Planning board for the two year was not filled, we are waiting on the write ins for confirmation from the writing candidates to see if they're going to take that for appointment. And then for our three year term, Don Everly won that position, so congratulations to everyone who won. If you do open your town report, this year dedicated this town report to Victor Lindberger, unfortunately he is not here, he is, I say vacationing, would you call it that, Brad, he is in Florida. But he is our Boston Kane holder and this year he'll be celebrating his one hundredth birthday, so congratulations to him. His family is actually going to present this to him when they go, so. And now Karen has a special announcement.
Several years ago, we decided to do an annual award for an outstanding or dedicated citizen who goes above and beyond for the need needs of the population. They do it without asking for recognition, they don't want, you know, any fanfare, anything else. We asked for nominations from all of the residents each year to see who they think would be appropriate. Every year we have several really good nominees. This year, the person has served for a number of years on Canton volunteer by department auxiliary. They're very active in the annual wreath festival as well as the cornhole fundraiser, they volunteer at the food pantry, going above and beyond, they do the pickups at various places to get the food. They're active in fundraising as well for the food pantry. When the neighbors are gone, they check on their, this person checks on their homes to make sure that everything is okay, nothing's happening. Takes people to doctor's appointments, so on and so forth, above and beyond, never asks for the line light. This year, the Board of Selectmen is proud to present the two thousand about twenty five citizens year to Linda Gannon. That's the actions we had.
I thought the mouth opened, the mouth closed, the mouth opened.
The other honor that goes along with this is you get to plug the tree lights in or tree lighting. Thank you.
That was one of the best reactions ever.
Yes, I did.
Congratulations, Linda, we're so proud to hear our, one of our very important citizens.
On the land.
She'll be back. I'm going to turn the meeting over to our moderator, Perry, just kind of touch on a few oohs and don'ts. Thank you. That was really fun to watch. So, good evening, everybody, if there's no objection, I just want to note that we'll use the main moderator's manual if we need it, we're having some with process. Nobody, if there's nobody objects, fine, that was an easy decision. I did this last year, I think I did this a year or two before that, been a while, huh? So who knows the answer to the question about what's your job while we're here? Who remembers? What's your job? Basically, it's to listen respectfully. And every once in a while, you're going to want to add to the conversation and then you can speak respectfully. That's not fair. And you'll know it's your turn because I'm Italian, and if I didn't tell you, guess what, it's not your turn, that's really. Pretty easy, but the idea is to go through these decisions that will help support the entire town for the next year. And we want to do that remembering that we were all neighbors when we started and it's a couple of neighbors when we get young. You did the voting on Tuesday, so I'm picking up an accountability with article number three. It reads, to see if the town will vote to allow the select board to appropriate the money raised their own way to pay tax abatements and applicable interest granted during the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion on article three, so thank you, is there a second? Article three has been moved and seconded as read, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? This is where if you want to talk, you read that little purple thing and something, and I try to call on you by name. I don't see any hands, so I would ask for your vote, all those in favor of the motion on article number three, please raise your cards, yes, thank you, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion on article three carries. Article four, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed pursuant to thirty six MRSA subsection five oh six and to pay zero percent on prepayments, is there a motion on article four? Thank you, was there a second, second, article four has been moved and seconded as read, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Seeing no hands, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of the motion on article four, please raise your cards, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion on article four carries, you've got to look at this. Article number five, the if the town will vote to authorize the select board to extend federal fund bonuses to meet unanticipated expenses and emergencies that may occur during the ensuing fiscal year, is there a motion on article five? Thank you, is there a second, second, article five has been moved and seconded as read, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Seeing no hands, all those for your vote, all those in favor of the motion on article five, please raise your cards, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion on article five carries. Article six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select boards on behalf of the town to enter into multi-year contracts, leases, lease purchase agreements and interlocal agreements in the name of the town if it is deemed in the best interest of the town. Is there a motion on article six? Thank you, second. Article six has been moved and seconded as read, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Well, let's have a vote then, all those in favor of the motion on article six, please raise your cards, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion on article six carries. Article seven, to see if the town will authorize the select board on behalf of the town to dispose of the tax advantaged property via put kind deed, but either A, offering the property to the former owners, or if they are deceased, to his or their heirs' devices. Personal representatives for price equal to all outstanding taxes, interest fees and costs, or B, using the process required by thirty six MRSA subsection nine forty three dash C, provided that if the board is unable to list or sell the property as required by subsection forty three, C three, the board may sell the property to a competitive sealed bid process in which a notice advertising sale of the property shall be published at least twice on a newspaper, then on circulation in the county. For sales other than a chronic owner, excess sale proceeds are in thirty six MRSA subsection nine forty three C, and we return to the former owner.
Could you reread that?
Sorry.
I have a, I have a question, just raise your card, how many do you think a lawyer wrote this?
Is there a motion?
Second.
All right, article number seven has been moved and seconded as read, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? All those in favor of the motion on article seven, please raise your hands, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion on article seven carries. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select boards to apply for and accept state and federal grants and grants from organizations on behalf of the town for municipal purposes, including when necessary, the authority to sign the grant contracts and accept the conditions that accompany grant funds and to appropriate and extend grant funds for the authorized purpose. Is there a motion on article eight? Thank you, and a second? Article number eight has been moved and seconded as read, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Seeing no hands, we'll vote, all those in favor of the motion on article eight, please raise your cards, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion on article eight carries. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to approve the disposal of equipment and other items deemed unusable or unnecessary during the ensuing fiscal year. So, thank you, second, second. Article number nine has been moved and seconded as read, and anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? All those in favor of the motion on article nine, please raise your cards, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion on article number nine carries. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to set the dates that fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, real estate and real personal property taxes are due as of November fifth, twenty twenty five, and May sixth, twenty twenty six, and to charge interest at the rate of six percent for annum when payment is received one day after these dates, interest shall not be compounded and shall accrue upon delinquent taxes until paid in full, this is per MRSA subsection five oh five dot four. So, thank you, with a second. Thank you, article number ten has been moved and seconded as read, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Seeing no hands, all those in favor of the motion on article number ten, please raise your cards, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion on article ten carries. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town's unavated taxes at three percent pursuant to thirty six MRSA subsection five oh six dot eight. So, thank you, second. Article number eleven has been moved and seconded as read, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? All those in favor of the motion on article number eleven, please raise your hands, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion on article number eleven carries. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to appropriate all the money received from the state for snowmobile registrations to the Canton Trail Riders snowmobile club, the maintenance of their suspension of snowmobile trails on condition that those trails are open in snow season for the public for snowmobiling at no charge. So, second, thank you, article number twelve has been seconded as read, anybody which would speak to the motion? Seeing no other hand, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of the motion on article twelve, please raise your hands, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the, listen, article number twelve carries. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the money received from agent fees from ATV registrations to the Canton Trail Riders ATV club for the maintenance of their ATV trails on the condition that those trails are open in the season to the public for ATV usage at no charge, is there a motion on article thirteen? Thank you, a second? Thank you, the article, the motion on article thirteen, moved and seconded, anybody who wishes to speak to the motion? Does that yes? No, okay. I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of the motion on article thirteen, please raise your hands, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion carries. Article fourteen, to see what sum affecting the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the budget committee. Both the budget committee and the selectmen recommend an amount of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Second, are you moving the recommended amount, right?
Yes.
Thank you, second, thank you, so the recommended amount has been moved and seconded in article number fourteen, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Seeing no hands, all those in favor of the motion on article fourteen, please raise your cards, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion carries. Article fifty, to see what sum if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the recreation committee. The budget committee and the selectmen recommend spending fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, is there a motion as article fifty?
So moved as read.
The recommended amount, yes, thank you, and a second, thank you, that's great. So the recommended amount has been moved and seconded in article number fifteen, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion?
I just have a question.
My question's fine for you, Michelle.
Sorry, I'm a liar, thank you. My question is, the workshop membership line, I just, what's that for? I thought, like, I was looking at the ball teams, that's for like the power and stuff, I mean, there's all that, what's the workshop and membership?
Brian, can you answer that question?
So, the workshop and membership and the ball teams both have, are separated out for the power to memberships, it's in both, there's some in both lines, it's not all in one.
Okay.
Yeah, memberships covers a couple of them, I can't remember which ones, but and there's also the insurance fees for power to come out of one of those.
Thank you. Seeing no hands, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of the article fifteen, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion on article fifteen carries. Article sixteen, to see what sum affecting the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the operation of Daniel government. There are two different recommendations, the budget committee recommends two hundred ninety three thousand nine hundred dollars, the selectmen recommend two hundred and ninety thousand and thirty dollars. Is there a motion for article sixteen?
Motion to deal with the selection is recommended amount.
Of two hundred ninety thousand and thirty dollars? Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, so the selectmen's recommended amount has been moved and seconded in article number sixteen, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Yes, I can't read it because it's too little. Is there someone who can answer the equipment?
That is the printer rentals. It's, we own the printers, but it's maintenance every year on the printers, so we put it on the rental. They will supply all, if, all if we have to have any maintenance.
Any other questions or comments, Michelle?
Why? Why is the compensation for the town clerk and the deputy going down? With, not the town clerk, the deputy. Going.
They're both.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so that's your question?
Yeah, that was my question.
Who can answer that question? Brian?
So, the compensation for the town clerk is going down to cover the amount of hours that we are open because the number on the twenty four, twenty five for both the clerk and the deputy, we didn't have people in those positions at the time that the twenty four, twenty five budget was done, so those numbers are significantly higher. The numbers for the selectmen recommendation lines cover Kathy for thirty six hours a week.
Yes.
For the, thirty.
Six.
Thirty six hours were open plus overtime, plus some overtime for voting days, and the deputies pay covers for thirty hours a week.
So they're shortening the.
We're reducing the deputy hours down to thirty hours a week.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else with a question?
Yes, sir.
This may have been addressed already in what we just answered, but does the budget committee wish to speak to the difference in their recommendation versus the selectmen's recommendations?
Yes.
The difference is when the budget committee met first and we based that on basically what was proposed from, based on last year. Right. Afterwards, the selectmen looked at the allocation of hours and, and tasks and made some changes to that, so the budget committee was assuming more hours than, than selectmen did.
So if you were asked today, would you support the selectmen's total?
Yes, I, I would.
And, I saw you, yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Yes, same, yeah. So there really isn't a conflict, there's one on time. Other questions? It has been moved and seconded to fund article sixteen with two thousand, two hundred ninety thousand and thirty dollars, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion on article sixteen carries. We neglected to mention this when we started, but there's actually somebody here who's attending their first town meeting, it could be more than one. Just pointing that out, make sure they want to come back. Article seventeen, see what sum affecting the town to vote to raise and appropriate for the operation of the fire department. In this instance, the budget committee and the selectmen recommend seventy one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
So moved in the amount of seventy one four sixty?
Thank you. The recommended amount has been moved and seconded, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Seeing no hands, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of the motion on seventeen, please raise your hands, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion on article seventeen carries. Article eighteen, to see what sum affecting the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the operation of protection and enforcement. Again, we have a recommendation from both the budget committee and the selectmen for ninety four thousand five hundred and eighty eight dollars, is there a motion on article eighteen?
Motion for the recommended amount, ninety four five eighty eight.
Thank you, is there a second? The recommended amount has been moved and seconded, article eighteen, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Yes, sir.
Yes, we do. David Sapphire, I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand.
Did anybody hear the question and the answer? The health officer is David.
Sapphire.
Sapphire, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Yes. Do we have a, do we have a CEO?
Do we have a CEO?
We have the same one who is currently doing us a favor, and we are we have it posted here on MMA, etc., trying to find a full time one.
I've seen it posted, I just don't know who's covering.
Not yet, it's probably still.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, I'll ask. Seeing no other hands, I'll ask for your vote. All those in favor of the motion Article eighteen, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion Article eighteen carries. Article nineteen, to see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the operation of an animal control. Again, both the budget committee and the selectmen recommend eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars.
So moved in the amount of eight thousand eight thirty-five.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Has been moved and seconded, and Article nineteen, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Seeing no hands, I'll ask for your vote. All those in favor of the motion Article nineteen, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion Article nineteen carries. Article twenty, to see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the operation of the planning board. Uh, there's a fifty-dollar difference of recommendations, the budget committee at four thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and selectmen at four thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Is there a motion? Yes.
Like to move with the selectmen's recommendation of four thousand six hundred and twenty.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. So this, the recommended amount from the selectmen has been moved and seconded. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion?
No. Can you explain the difference? That's the difference.
We, we took fifty dollars off mileage because it hadn't been used for a number of years.
So they're essentially the same. It sounds like, the difference was something.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Well, all those in favor of the motion Article twenty, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the most Article twenty carries. Article twenty-one, to see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the operation of public works. Again, we have two different recommendations, the budget committee recommending two hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-two. And the selectmen recommending two thousand, two, excuse me, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Is there a motion, Article twenty-one?
Motion for the selectmen's recommendation of two ninety-nine one fifty.
Second. Thank you. So the selection's recommendation has been moved and seconded. Is there anyone who wants to speak to the motion?
Yes, it's Robin.
Thank you, Robin.
Difference in compensation, is that just timing?
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, difference in timing and one new employee.
Awesome.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my question is regarding trainings and workshops, could there be, uh, some insight added about, um, the, the two thousand dollar difference between the budget committee's recommendation that the select board's recommendation?
Brian, you want to?
Uh, yeah, I would say by looking at those, that the numbers got flipped for equipment rental and training and workshops.
Yep.
I need, I need you to be a little bit more specific.
So.
Like as an inside joke.
No, so on the budget committee, there was equipment rental three thousand, training and workshops for one thousand. On the selectmen, there's one thousand for equipment rental and three thousand for training and workshops, so those numbers got flipped.
Yeah.
Put into the part you did.
It does make sense.
The two lines should agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they they cancel themselves out in terms of dollar figures, but it should be three thousand for equipment rental and one thousand for workshops.
Yes, so using the figure of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand one hundred and fifty, we're actually accurate.
Correct.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? See, yes, sir?
Can I make a motion? What goes?
You don't actually have to, because the only number that really matters is the number that Brian moved.
Yeah.
What happens in between, some stuff could move around and so forth over the course of the year, so it's okay. I don't see any other hands, I'm gonna ask for your votes. All those in favor of the motion Article twenty-one, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you. The motion carries. Article twenty-two. To see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the operation of the transport station. We have identical recommendations from the budget committee and the selectmen for one hundred and five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. The confirmed motion Article twenty-two, Carol, is there a?
Yes, at the one hundred and five four fifty, no matter.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, the recommended amount has been moved and seconded. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to that motion? Seeing no hands, I'll ask for your vote. All those in favor of the motion Article twenty-two, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Article twenty-three. To see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the following professional services. And both the budget committee and selectmen are recommending fifty-one thousand dollars in Article twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve at fifty-one thousand.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The rest of the movement has been moved and seconded in Article twenty-three. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to that motion? Yes, sir.
Seventeen, we're about the line for legal, uh, the amount that is expended in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five uh, fiscal year. I don't see a number where there are no expenditures for, uh, legal review.
Brian?
Uh, when this was done, we haven't received any bills at that time. Yeah, so the legal review money for the ordinance and a couple of the things will be billed at some point. Um, yeah, they hadn't billed us at the time this was done, so.
So we can anticipate there'll be some expenses that's.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. That's okay, there and now.
There are other questions or comments? Seeing no hands, I'll ask for your vote. All those in favor of the motion Article twenty-five? Thank you, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion Article twenty-three carries. Article twenty-four. To see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the operation of code enforcement. Both the budget committee and the selectmen recommend four thousand five hundred dollars.
So moved to forty-five hundred.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
The recommended amount has been moved and seconded in Article twenty-four. Anyone who wishes to speak to that motion? Seeing no hands, I'll ask for your vote. All those in favor of the motion Article twenty-four, please raise your hands. Thank you, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion Article twenty-two carries. Article twenty-five, to see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the expenses related to general assistance. And to appropriate interstate reimbursements against expenses related to general systems. Is there a motion, oh, excuse me, the recommended amount is four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars booked by the budget committee and the selectmen? Is there?
So. So, yes, so moved to forty-six fifty.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, the recommended amount has been moved and seconded in Article twenty-five. Anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? No, Carol, is your hand up?
No.
Okay, I'm waiting.
Okay. Uh, I'll ask for your vote at this point. All those in favor of the motion Article twenty-five, please raise your hand.
Thank you, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion Article twenty-five carries. Article twenty-six. To see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for town buildings. Here, both the budget committee and the select persons recommend twenty-three thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved, the recommended amount.
It's the twenty-three thousand. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded to use the recommended amount in Article twenty-six. Anyone who wishes to speak to that motion? Seeing no hands, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion Article twenty-six carries. Article twenty-seven, to see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for debt service. There's a slight difference in the recommendations, I think it's a rounding difference.
Yeah.
Um, the budget committee recommended one thousand, excuse me, one hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars. And the selectmen listed one hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. Is there a motion?
So moved, the selectmen's recommendation.
Thank you, if there's a second. Right, thank you. So, the selectmen's recommendation has been moved and seconded in Article twenty-seven. Anyone that wants to speak to this motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion Article twenty-seven, please raise your hands. Thank you, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion Article twenty-seven carries. Article twenty-eight, to see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for town improvements. Here we have an agreement, the budget committee and the selectmen both recommend six thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Is there a motion, Article twenty-eight?
So moved for sixty-eight twenty-five.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Recommended amount has been moved and seconded. Anyone who wishes to speak to this motion? Seeing no hands, all those in favor of the motion Article twenty-eight, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, you guys are making us crazy.
Oh, now we're getting in this kind of stuff.
Article twenty-nine, to see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for Andrew Stodden Home House. The budget, uh, this is right requested enough here.
Right.
A five hundred dollars. No recommendation.
Can I explain why there's no recommendations?
Sure.
But. The board, the select board and the budget committee both agreed that we don't feel it's up to us to give a number to you guys to vote on, if that's your choice, we don't want to spend your money for you on charities that way. So. That's why we chose to go that route.
Okay. For the, for the next several articles.
Yes.
Article thirty-nine. This article through thirty-nine are all the same.
Thank you. So it's, it's this article and the following then?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion um, on Article number twenty-nine.
I need a motion for the requested amount for five hundred dollars.
Is there a second? Second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to, um, they had this about the home house, five hundred dollars as they requested. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to that motion? Yes, sir.
I simply want to, uh, ask to have a quick review done. What is the process for determining the requested amounts? For this, and it'll be the same question going forward.
So how, how do, how do those requests come in?
Right. Uh, so the requests that are listed here are ones that we received letters from all of the social services that we're, that are in the warrant um, requesting whatever their amount of dollars was, that's the number that was put in the warrant. Yeah, so it's whatever they're requesting.
So in fact, the choice of how much to fund depends on who makes the motion and how much money they want it to improve. This is what the ask was.
Correct.
Does that make sense? Yes, sir.
There's a certain, there's a certain timeline by which these organizations need to submit them, and did anybody from these organizations appear before, uh, let's say, the budget committee to make to make the case for why they should receive the funds?
Yeah.
I'm just looking for who might have an answer.
We asked that the requests are received usually by, I believe it's March first. And one of the things that we, instead of having them come in person, we asked them to provide us with a brief summary of the services that they provide within the town. Nothing, you know, name-related or anything like, just, just an overview of what services they are providing for our residents.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I'm wondering if another year maybe we could have those letters put in the book like some towns do, so you know exactly what they're asking for.
Right now, the matter before us is Article, the motion Article twenty-nine for five hundred dollars for Andrew Stodden Home House. Are there any other comments? Or question? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion Article twenty-nine carries. Article thirty. To see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for ARCM. And again, this is a requested amount of two thousand dollars. Was there a motion for Article number thirty?
So moved to two thousand.
Is there a second? Okay. All right, so the requested amount of two thousand dollars has been moved and seconded for Article number thirty. Is there anyone who wants to speak to that motion? Yes, sir.
I'm not familiar with the acronym, ARCAM, so if someone could explain what organization?
Yeah, Rural Community Action Ministers.
And, and is there, there is not any information in the book about the?
No, it's, um, they're based out of.
Those are, everybody here that represents that organization, but sometimes people come.
No.
There isn't, no one has.
No, he's.
Dave.
Go ahead, you have a story.
I know that PPMF receives money from RPM twice a year, and they should have received seeds and seed, so they distributed as well.
Are there other questions or comments? And we'll ask for your vote. All those in favor of the motion for Article thirty, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion Article number thirty carries. Article thirty-one. To see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for community concerts, the requested amount is six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Is there a motion, Article thirty-one?
Make a motion for the requested amount of six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there a second?
I'll second.
The requested amount has been moved and seconded. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Seeing no hands, I'll ask for your vote. All those in favor of the motion Article thirty-one, please raise your hands. Thank you. Thank you, the motion Article thirty-one carries. Article thirty-two, to see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for seniors plus. The request from seniors plus is for one thousand dollars. Is there a motion, Article thirty-two?
How was the requested amount of one thousand dollars?
Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, the rec- excuse me, the requested amount has been moved and seconded in Article number thirty-two. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion?
Oh, would someone, could someone speak to services we get from them?
I really can't. Seniors.
Thank you.
Please, in this case, we're talking about seniors plus. I don't know if there's anyone that's had interaction with that organization. Who could speak to the services, yes, are you a resident?
Thank you, I'm a resident.
What we should. Well, you have to tell me the name first.
Trisha.
Thank you.
Number Trisha.
Oh, thank you, Trisha. Um. Would someone make a motion to allow Trisha to speak as a non-resident?
I'd make a motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your cards. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Seniors plus will help seniors get to appointments, they'll bring the news, um, I'm so made. And they, um, numerous people in the stove, they go all the way up there with news, getting them to doctor's appointments, helping them fill out paperwork, um, but necessary services and that, so I don't know if there's any residents in this town that are receiving benefits in that manner. But we should ask that for next year, but they are definitely, I mean, my town loves that that services in. Coming in town. Does that help?
Everybody went out to wish to speak to the motion Article thirty-two. Seeing no hands, I'll ask for your vote. All those in favor of the motion Article thirty-two, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion. Article thirty-three, to see what's, um, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the public. The requested amount is one hundred dollars. There are motion on Article thirty-three. I should explain, it doesn't have to be. Maybe emotions pass over, would be good.
Make a motion, pass over.
Thank you. And it's, it's been moved and seconded to pass over, I would number thirty-three. Generally not debatable, all those in favor? Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Uh, when you pass over Article thirty-three. I have a ten, I'm pleased to join the. Article thirty-four, to see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the River Valley Chamber of Commerce. The requested amount is one thousand dollars.
Make a move in the passover.
A second.
Been moved and seconded to get passed over. Um, Article thirty-four, it's not debatable, all those in favor of the motion to pass over, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion to pass over Article thirty-four passes. Article thirty-five, to see what some if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for saved voices, the requested amount is two hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved at two fifty.
Is there a second? So it's the requested amount of two hundred and fifty dollars has been moved and seconded in Article thirty-five. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion?
Yes, ma'am. It does begin to pass over some of the others I'd like to, I'm having a decent five hundred.
So you're making a motion to amend the amount to five hundred dollars. Is there a second to the proposed? So you're making a motion to amend the amount to five hundred dollars, is there a second to the proposed amendment, uh, amendment? Well, it fails on the last.
Yes, absolutely, so you get a point for effort.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the motion article thirty-five? Okay, all those in favor of the motion article thirty-five, please raise your. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion article thirty-five carries, article thirty-six. To see what some of any of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for Cancer Resource Center of Western Maine. Requested amount is two hundred and fifty dollars, there are motion article thirty-six. Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, Michelle, second. So, um, article thirty-six has been moved and seconded as requested, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion?
I believe we need his name for the.
John White.
John White.
Thank you, thank you, sorry.
That's okay, that's what we need. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this motion before we vote? So. I'll ask for your vote, saying no hand, all those in favor of the motion article thirty-six, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the most are article thirty-six carries, article thirty-seven. To see what some of any of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for Helping Hands of Western Maine. Requested amount is three hundred dollars.
Make a motion to pass over.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass over article number thirty-seven. This is not debatable, all those in favor of the motion to pass over, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, article thirty-seven, who's in town, they're. Article thirty-eight, to see what some of any of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for non-main. Anybody know what N A M I stands for?
It's male health.
Yeah.
Suicide. It's suicide prevention awareness group.
Thank you, a suicide prevention awareness group. And the request is for five hundred dollars, is there a motion on article thirty-eight?
Make a motion for the requested amount of five hundred dollars. Five hundred dollars.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Requested amount has been moved and seconded in article thirty-eight, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Saying no hands, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of the motion article thirty-eight, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion article thirty-eight carries, article thirty-nine. To see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for streets are. Their requested amount is two hundred and fifty dollars, there are motion article thirty-nine, yes, sir.
Motion pass over, but what is streets, sir?
What is it?
Well, let's get a second.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to pass over article thirty-nine. And who would like to answer the question about what is streets, sir?
I can't.
It's a, it's a nonprofit.
Go ahead, Michelle.
It's a nonprofit, um, organization for, for mental health for children and, uh, for young adults. They do case management and charity. We can probably start to see the fairness.
So we love that, just to answer that question, because I thought it was fair before I asked you to vote, but the motion to pass over is not debatable, so now that you've had that answer, I'm going to ask for your vote. All those in favor of passing over article thirty-nine, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion carries, the pass over mentioned here, sir. Article forty, to see what some of any of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for local organizations. And here we have recommendation from the budget committee and from the select manager, two thousand seven hundred dollars.
So moved at twenty-seven hundred?
Thank you, is there a second? And see, the recommended amount has been moved and seconded for article number forty, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion?
Okay.
I would like to amend it for eleven minority of a thousand dollars. What I'm interested in is what do you want that bottom line number to be?
Thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven hundred.
No, thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Ma'am, it's been a long week, that's right. Thanks for the math help, though, I'm really adverse to doing that in public. So what you would like to do is increase the bottom line by five hundred dollars, and that would make it thirty-two hundred dollars. That's, that's a, um. That's a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Thirty.
Okay. So right now, we're going to talk about the possibility of the amendment, which is to add that five hundred dollars, is there anyone that wants to speak to that proposal? Saying no hands. And I'm going to ask for your vote, if you were in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the amended amount is now before the void. It's not to go yet the right way, so I'll say it the right way. And you can do that. Three thousand two hundred dollars. So. The amended, yes, sir.
Uh, why did we add money for the historical society, was the one in the quote?
Is there someone who can speak to what the historical society needs money for?
Um, we hadn't asked for anybody in the last, um, charge. Uh, when after in the last few years of tradition. Uh, we give you money to the historical society, but that, that might be used for, if you have to keep those, uh, building, uh, or the things that we, uh, that we do in in town and supporting programs that we offer in town.
Now that's something. Uh, you may, if he's finished. If he's finished.
I think so.
I think from the select board's point of view, I'm hoping not speaking for anybody out of turn, the Kent Historic Society allows us to use their space as well, so we thought it was appropriate.
So right now, the main motion before the body has been amended. And, um, the dollar figure for the motion article forty would be three thousand two hundred dollars. Based on the amendment, is there anyone else who wishes to speak for the amended main motion? Saying no hands, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the amended motion on article forty passes. Article forty-one, to see what some of any of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the scholarship fund. Both the budget committee and select men recommend two thousand dollars. There are no.
So moved at two thousand.
Thank you, is there a second? Okay. Uh, article forty-one has been moved and seconded at the, uh, recommended amount, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Yes, Brian.
Uh, just as a side note, um, the board of selectmen agreed at the last uh, select meeting to, uh, make this a rollover account. So like, this past year, you'll notice there's only a thousand dollars that has not, that has been spent out of that account, the second person who received the scholarship did not uh, go on to school. So what we're going to do is if there is money left in that account, it will roll over into the scholarship account for next year, so it would give us the opportunity to give out maybe one more scholarship.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the motion article forty-one, yes, sir?
The, the scholarship fund, what, what is, what what's the target audience for, for those funds?
Yes, Karen, any graduating seniors that live in the town of Kent. We asked them to write an essay explaining what being a resident of Kent means, what our slogan means, you know, the small town with a big heart. And there's a free member committee that reviews all of their essays and then determines the recipients.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah. I think you said one of the students wasn't part of the school, and I wasn't going to lose it, but, uh, would it that include like a location home programs or experimentation programs?
Go ahead, Brian.
Yes, it can be, it doesn't have to be just college, it can be, um, the people that apply for it can be either going on to post second, anything post-secondary. It can be either a trade program, it can be to the military, anything like that, and they still would qualify for applying for the scholarship.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the motion article thirty-one? Saying no hands, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of the motion article thirty-one, please raise your hands, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the message article thirty-one carries. Article forty-two. To see what some of any of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the operation of the parks and trails. Both the budget committee and the select men recommend two thousand three hundred dollars, is there a motion on article thirty-two?
So moved at twenty-three hundred?
Thank you, is there a second? Second. The recommended amount has been moved and seconded in article number forty-two, if anyone who wishes to speak to the motion. Saying no hands, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion article forty-two carries, article forty-three. To see what some of any of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the reserve accounts. Both the budget committee and the select men recommend one hundred and ten thousand dollars, is there a motion for article forty-two?
Can I?
So moved.
Let's make a motion for us. So. The hundred and ten thousand.
I was just going to point out that these are the current balances as of March twenty-sixth in the respective reserve accounts.
Is there anyone who's, wishes to ask questions or make a comment about the motion article forty-three?
Oh. It's actually as of today.
Our numbers are as of today.
You told me the wrong number.
I was reading off the paper.
Sorry about that.
Better.
Yep, yep. More current.
Yes.
I did what I was told. First time for everything.
Yes, sir.
Is there a goal for each department to reach, money will stop being put into the reserves?
Are there targets? Brian?
Uh, there are no specific target in terms of dollar figures, um, other than we know, um, the highway department has one truck that is aging pretty significantly, um, the fire department has a brush truck that is in need of repair. Um, and we have a lot of work that needs to be done.
So if there isn't, and we don't know what is used here.
I'm, I think I asked this last year, money that's sitting in reserve accounts isn't making money for us. In terms of interests and things like that, because that's, it's a lot of money there.
Fair and sparing, uh, if they're sitting in the main account. And what's sitting in the main account is.
Can you hear?
What, what is that?
Karen, just, Tricia, can you start over?
Well, sorry, sorry, so the money that's sitting in the main account for those is an interest-bearing account. Let me look up the interest.
And do we have to put it in, do we have to use certain banks to put reserve money in? Right?
Right.
So we, to answer that, we don't, uh, but I just want to say, the one thing we are doing, um, we're currently starting to look at shopping banks. Um, and also, um, one thing we're working with Tricia on is trying to take some of our money and investing it either into a higher-yielding CD or something other than just the traditional, uh, sweep account that it's in currently.
If you guys need help with that. I volunteer.
Tricia, you can find. I don't have it on this pink word, but I can get it up to the main.
Are there any other questions or comments on the motion article forty-three? Saying no, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of the motion article forty-three, please raise your hands, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion article forty-three carries, article forty-four. To see if the town will vote to create a reserve account called Sewer Department Reserve and raise an appropriate ten thousand dollars for the sewer department reserve. So. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, article forty-four has been moved and seconded as read, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Yes, sir.
Question, is the sewer department a town department or in the department?
It's the sewer department, main department of the town, Karen?
It's a town department. It's a self, in theory, a self-funding one, but we obviously do not have the usus that we had when the system was put in. And there are going to be some pretty significant repairs needed in the not-too-distant future. So instead of reacting, we're trying to be proactive.
Brian?
So kind of to expand on that a little bit, the hard thing about the sewer department is the main operation of the sewer department is only, are only funded by the ratepayers. So the thing for, the big reason we need the reserve account created um, is to help ease the burden on the ratepayers, because we have, I believe it's eighty.
Uh, nine, eight, seven?
Less than a hundred, um, sewer customers.
Yes. Because there's some that have multiple beds, so yes.
Yeah, essentially, it's less than a hundred sewer users now, and like she said, the sewer department is aging and is going to need some significant things put into it. Um, and we've met with, um, a couple of other towns on what they do for their sewer departments, um, looking at other options, whether it's raising the rates to cover it, um, but it sounds like, and talked to a couple of other towns, they've done a similar thing where they've created a sewer department reserve that the regular taxpayers all contribute to, to help cover that service for the town as a whole.
Yeah, and one of the main things that the other towns that we spoke with mentioned is if we want to apply for any grants, and if we say, oh, we don't have a reserve account, they go, yes, sorry, bye-bye. So. It's, it's a multi-recent approach.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Diane. Um, if there were going to be some sewer improvements for the town, like, would that possibly include like some kind of expansion of the sewer systems? And people that he's armed on it, because they're on it, or maybe put in a public restaurant at the ball field?
Is there anyone that could answer any of the questions, Brian?
Nothing is planned at this time.
Yes, ma'am. Diane, right? Come to the progress and plan committee meetings, and we can put that in. Any other questions or comments regarding the motion article forty-four? Saying no hands, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of the motion article forty-four, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion article forty-four carries. Article forty-five, to see if the town will vote and appro, vote to raise and appropriate for the bond, boat launch, why can't I read this? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the boat launch, both the select, budget committee recommended five hundred and eighty dollars, is there a motion on article forty-five?
So moved at five eighty.
Thank you, is there a second? The recommended amount has been moved and seconded for article forty-five, any who wants to speak to the motion? Yes, sir.
What expenditures have been made for the boat launch, uh, let's say during the last fiscal year that we can look to?
Karen, this chip only covers the electric bill for the, oh, any electricity that you set for launch.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Uh, there are other services for the, um, boat launch that are done by volunteers from the town, and they associate in, uh, good folks. Who do it themselves rather than.
And we thank you.
Some in-kind donations of time and expertise, sounds good. Other questions or comments? Saying no, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of the motion article forty-five, please raise your hands, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion article forty-one carries, article forty-six. To see if the town will vote to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars received from the town park for its fire protection into the five hundred golds accounts, or take any actions relative there to. There are most on article forty-six.
So moved.
There are seconds.
Second.
So article forty-six has been moved and seconded as read, anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Saying no hands, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of the motion article forty-six, please raise your hands, thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion article forty-six, I'm almost done. I got to tell you, I was in Harrison last, I lasted one, three hours.
No, thanks.
To see if the town will vote to raise to appropriate, um, article forty-seven, see if the town will vote to raise to appropriate all revenues received that are not dedicated or otherwise appropriated for other expenses to reduce the tax commitment. There are some estimates that, uh, provided under the article. Probably has been hundred and three thousand seven hundred dollars, there are most on article forty-seven. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
So, the article forty-seven's been moved and seconded as read, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Saying no hands, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion article forty-seven carries, article forty-eight. To see if the town will adopt the town of Kent's sanitary organs as presented. To see if the town will adopt the town of Canton cemetery ordinance as presented. Is there a motion on article forty-eight?
So moved. Second.
All right, so article forty-eight has been moved and seconded as read, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion? Yes, sir.
And you, um, prohibiting passenger vehicles in vine road?
Karen?
Section six, article, uh, second and six, receives of the riding of vehicles of any sort shall not be allowed.
I'm session, I have an answer to the question.
Well, six. I would see.
There's a gentleman in the front row who has an answer. Go ahead.
The latter part of that section says, uh, shall not be allowed within any town cemetery without the permission of the cemetery's sexton. So, it, it doesn't. It wouldn't be a total ban, but obviously that permission would be necessary.
Does that answer your question?
No, the way it's written says no vehicle of any sort shall be allowed.
It says ready, uh, it's not ready in.
Yeah, okay, let's do this one at a time, it's the, then you know what you're telling is people can't ride their vehicles in the cemetery, I don't have a copy, that's.
I think would you meant to say recreational vehicle, but. The way it's written says any vehicle, vehicle of any sort.
I think that's right. So I'm still waiting to see if anybody needs to, the question. I got it. Are you going to tell me what part, because I don't read that fast.
Section six, there are the.
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Ray?
My intent would not to prevent automobiles.
Oh, it says.
I will let it finish, okay, so, Ms. Ray, I was.
The intended not to prevent automobiles from coming in during the course of the cemetery, whatever, but it's to prevent the private vehicle that you ride on. Like the list that's limited there, bicycle motorcycles, automobiles, E T Vs.
So, I, I understand that, I was going to come back to you, okay, so we're not trying to talk over you. What you're asking is, are you, are you being asked to adopt an ordinance that you think is unclear?
I believe what their intention was recreational, because that's not what it says. So. Just making people aware of what's written.
Yes, and I need you to be aware that we can't amend this and this session.
Right.
So you can either adopt it and give, I don't, give these, is there an ordinance committee? And ask the planning board to make the correction, if that's an option, or you can not, you can vote no. And send it to the planning board to make the correction and bring it back at the next time. Those are the options, then. Because even though you might agree here on the change, you can't amend the ordinance in this session. So right now, yes, sir?
I changed mine. If we move it to be fixed before we vote on it. Do we have to vote on it at another town meeting next year?
Or if there's a special town meeting for some reason between now and then, it could be on that agenda. And it just, if you adopt it tonight. You have to then, you, it sounds like it's the intent that the gentleman raises is accurate. That you would be looking to the planning board to make a change for the next time so that it was clear. Yes, ma'am.
Question, do we have, we already have a seven thirty ordinance that it would be, since being able to stay until we vote anyone in.
Let's find out, Karen, there is a current one in place. Yes.
On section eleven talks about elevating memorial to prohibited. What exactly does that mean, how elevated their memorial needs to be?
The power, the, um, the ordinance doesn't speak to the answer to your question. Right? So that. You would like it to. You would like it to.
Yeah, I think it should be defined what, what elevated memorial is, or was that, with that amendment.
Oh, Brian?
Can I make a motion that we send this back to the planning board?
Second.
I guess you can. Hang on a second, just so that, um. Yes, that's an appropriate motion, essentially tabling it.
Tabling it, that sounds good.
Yes, sir.
I don't understand why we're making a big deal out of all of it, because it's the enforcement, anything we currently have, anything.
Well, I don't know, we have an answer for you on that.
Sorry, I just want a question statement.
You would like to be the code enforcement officer and help, we would gladly take it.
Enforcement officer, nothing has been enforced up there at all.
So at this point, the, you have, you have the proposed ordinance, it has been moved and seconded to adopt it. But there's a subsequent motion essentially to table it and send it back. And then that is the motion that I'm going to ask you to vote on. All those in favor of tabling the ordinance and sending it back, please raise your hands. Thank you, hands down, all those opposed. Thank you, the motion to table carries. Is there other representatives? After me. Okay, is there any, I'm sorry? I said after me.
Oh, after.
Is there anybody here from the planning board? Okay. That's just good, so you heard it, yes, Ms. Ray.
Saying ordinances are made public months in advance, and there are public hearings on ordinances, so it'd be, be really helpful to have people come at that time and have a second set by.
Good ask. That's all we had to do tonight. You have to move.
Second.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Tara.
Thanks.